All right, six o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Do you have a recorder?
Oh, we got the camera.
Oh, yeah.
And you had me for a second. She walked up with a recorder.
All right, call the meeting to order. First order of business. Approve, review and approve the minutes from April 2nd. Twenty twenty five. I make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm staying because I wasn't here.
Okay. Aye. Okay, aye, you have it. Very good. All right. Then we got some adjustments to the agenda. You gotta add, no, that's one, we gotta move. The library policy review is up at the top here, so we're gonna move that and delete the one down at the bottom, right?
Yep, under department.
We're gonna move Dan front and center. The department updates. And we're gonna move the assessor discussion on new assistant assessor candidate review to the bottom. So we all have time, so. Our first order of business is local emergency plan review.
Dan first.
I'm gonna do Dan first?
Dan first.
Okay, okay, so we're not gonna do these up here?
No, you will, but Dan wanted to go first.
You want, okay, you wanna go right now, okay, very good.
First of all, if you folks get a chance to see the investigation I did.
Yeah.
Any questions that I can answer for you? I'll try to be as clear as I can.
Looks pretty thorough.
Okay.
The subdivision?
Yeah, it should be a subdivision going in next month.
Well, we won't have the public meeting until?
No, we'll have a public meeting after that.
We'll have a permanent subdivision. Was that it?
That's it.
That's it? Thought I got it.
Can I ask you one question? Have you been talking to Harold about the curb cut?
Oh, yes, that was the other thing. I have talked with Harold extensively about curb cut. We are meeting when he gets back from vacation. We're gonna go through, we'll go to wordsmith. Because there's some things in there, in our old one, that needs to be updated. For instance, a recording feeds are one of the things. The language, the ability to take and have some sort of consequence if they violate it. So, there's some things that we've looked at from various towns, Vandal being one, Peachtree being one of them, that have really good things with the curb cut program that ours doesn't. But there's also some more things that we want to make the person go accountable that's putting the curb cut in. Rather than just like you having you sign off on it and then never going back and checking to see if the person did what they were supposed to do. So, after he gets back from vacation, which I believe is a week from Saturday, we'll sit down that following Monday or Tuesday. We'll wordsmith it and then bring it to a following meeting to have you look at it, see what you have for suggestions or things you'd want changed.
All right. Sounds good, thank you, Dan.
Covers this one too, right?
All right. So now we'll do the local emergency plan. We have got a just motion to approve it.
Promoted.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'll just make sure that additions I put in are here.
All right, next we're on to the lib-
Gordon Madsen, next librarian, she's not here yet, she just closed the library, so she might be-
Okay, NIMs adoption, which is National Incident Management System. We need, we got a form here, we need to sign tonight, we need a motion for me to sign it.
Promoted.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Done deal. All right. Treasurer?
Okay. So I handed out budgets last meeting, and if there's any questions, we're at, should be about 25%. I don't know if you had any questions. May 7th, this is the next select board meeting, I will not be attending it, so I was, I think Harley confirmed that she'll be able to do the minutes.
Perfect.
Right, okay. We received the $79,000 from the MERP grant. They were going to give us money upfront, so it wouldn't be a hardship on our budget, so we got that. And the appointed positions, we got all the letters back, except we still need an NEK solid waste alternate. So.
It's an easy job.
Be thinking.
I'm number one, man.
Yeah.
It would be just someone who goes in, if like I can't make a meeting where I know there's a vote, like an important vote, let's say their budget. They seem to have somewhat of a hard time with quorum. So having someone there for like that type of meeting would be important, but I've been attending almost all the meetings, occasionally miss one. But if there's no vote, I don't, I won't reach out to the alternate, probably.
All right, so you gotta think of one that I can send a letter to, so.
Try my neighbor.
Yeah. Yeah.
Could try her boyfriend.
Maybe.
It's so easy.
That's all I really have, I have a lot to talk about in maintenance, there's a lot of issues, but I'll wait till the end if you want. Or you want me to do maintenance now, or?
Yeah, just get it done.
Get it done, okay. The banners got changed, the snowflakes are down, big thank you to Ben and Frank for taking the time to do it, I think they look great. Alliance, the cement work is starting on Monday, so this is where they'll be working. Steve covered all the plastic, everything with plastic and took everything down, because it could get real dusty in here. Sean Fielder from our USDA, he's the one that comes over and has the, holds the meetings and helps me through all of the USDA paperwork and process. He took an early resignation program, so he's done. I think his last day was the other day, when he told me. So there's another person that's going to add this duty to her plate, so it's gonna be not a new person taking over, it's a person who is trying to shove it into her plate, so that was very sad, because Sean knew the plan, started it from the beginning, and we really are close to the end, and I'm sad that he's done. Myers dumpster, I think we were kinda talking about that, so we're gonna have to move that pretty soon because of the parking lot, so if you guys can tell me where, I'll call Myers and ask him.
Yeah, I would think the highway garage is probably it, it's like the securist location we have.
Okay, I'll let the cleaners know, that's where they'll put the trash, what have you.
Here, he's gonna wanna know that for tomorrow, too.
She's gonna wanna know that for tomorrow?
Because she's gotta give the J O.
Oh, yes, 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 yep. Aiken Plumbing was here this week, and he had to replace the stink pipe up top, so he did that. And there's a, there was a drain problem in here with the pump. He cleaned it all out, works now. And then I asked him if he could give me a rough estimate to run that unfiltered water line over to the community garden, and he thought it was possible for about $500. So, something to think about, and we could get on his schedule. He's going on vacation as well, so, you know, but but if we could just think about it, I didn't think that was too bad to help out the garden, but I did check out with our, check in with our hazard mitigation guy for the buyout house program, and he said we're still in limbo, we're still waiting, he hasn't heard anything negative, so I think that's a good sign. So, the other thing for maintenance is we, with the warm days we had just yesterday and the day before, we are noticing, noticed all last summer, we have lots of hornets and bees in that entranceway. So I looked online in Termex, I just filled out a little thing, he came today and did a big inspection on the ramp, and you know, we see them flying in the vents way, way, way up top on both sides, and we have a huge nest by the chimney. So he did a big, big, he climbed up into the attic, he looked all down here. We had problems with, in the food shelf with mice. So he, he found rodent fecal matter, wasp, hornet nests, and carpenter ants, amongst other things, and so he sent over a plan. So he could come, he could come over and get everything removed for $4,125. It's a whole list of things that he would do. And he would fix where they come in, these vents, he would, he would fix it, so they would only go out. They can't come in. So anything that's around would get out, but they can't get back in. And then it would be like a one-year plan, that's the other option is $1,500, but he thinks that that's not gonna put those things in, he's not gonna seal up down here, so things could still get in. So, you know, we do have community building reserves. I don't think this is that bad, I think we might have to do a monthly thing with him, and it's $89 a month. I think until we can get it, he saw a lot up in the attic. And he saw a lot of droppings, all on the stage and everywhere. So, I just wondered what you thought about it. You can think about it, talk about it next week, next meeting, I just $4,125.
And where would that come from if we were to do it?
The community building reserve money, we plenty in there. And I don't think this building has ever been treated.
I was gonna ask if the money's been treated.
No, not in-
The carpenter ants is what really bothers me.
Yeah, he said this-
I have them at my house, they come back every year.
Lot of damage. So, I mean, he said it's all, they're all under the siding, said the siding breaks down, the boards behind it, after it gets old, they break down, and that's where they're living, he said he saw them all around, he could see their droppings stuck in the cobwebs. So, I think it needs to be done.
I personally do, I mean, I think, I know some people that have had issues and hired people like this to-
He seemed to really know what he was talking about.
And, but we need to start it and keep going with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do.
You know, I'm comparing it to the clear water filtration, we never had them come quarterly, and we had problems all the time with the water. And then we started having clear water come quarterly, and now things are 100% better. I mean, we had that one problem, but, you know.
And I don't know what, of course, we got with the MERP, all the construction that could be going.
Right, right. Well, they're not doing windows, so, you know.
Yeah, I think we should, I personally think we should-
Either way, we'll have workers accessing those areas and kind of wash nests and stuff like that.
We'll get him on board, and he'll be back and check on us.
Mm-hmm, yep. So if you wanna make a motion to use the money from reserves, that would be great, I can get on his list. If not, no, it's, you can do it another time.
Well, thanks for your fine work up front.
I was surprised he walked through the door, I couldn't believe it, I thought he was gonna call me. And he comes in this morning, I said, I just filled that out yesterday.
Where's he out of?
He, no, he does the whole state of Vermont, he's from Fairfax, actually, so he does the whole state.
I wonder if we should get other quotes or not, I use a guy out of Marshfield, and he, he comes along and supplies for the carpenter ants, and then it's guaranteed for a year, so if I see one-
Yeah, they have, they're guaranteed.
So he's got, I was gonna, my question is, do they have that guarantee of like-
I just didn't think it was that much money, and, you know, he has it all spelled out.
Yeah. I think it has to get done.
I make a motion that we take the money out of the community building reserve for pest control.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Okay, town clerk, Carrie's not here. Yeah, so.
Want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Local emergency management plan, we covered that in this meeting, so we, we moved to approve it, but I think she wants to, actually, she just told me before. She wanted us to send that to the-
Next person, Zach, or?
To Zach before we approved it. Well, maybe we make a motion to send it to Zach for-
Maybe adjust it.
So, I forgot about that, you already signed the NIMs form. FEMA says final reports have been submitted, and we're waiting for the final meeting to take place, hopefully receive funds by the end of the summer. For the pound road bridge, there's a stream alteration permit to sign, which I assume we've probably signed. The decision to put the whole project out to bid, or do we have the highway crew to do it, is the question, I guess, that she's asking.
Yeah.
So we probably have to make a decision on that. Highway isn't here, so maybe-
Harold's not here, I talked with him, well, we talked about it back three, four months ago when it happened, and he, he said he thought it was something he could do. And then that's when we got Nate involved, and then we didn't think he could do it, because it was gonna be a bigger, the scope of the project was gonna be more than we could handle, but now Nate's, he's got it all engineered, right?
Nate's the engineer we used for the fucking one?
Yeah. And they're not gonna go with a box collar, like we did up on Powder Spring, it's a aluminum collar, it comes in pieces, so it's all stuff Harold can do, comfortable doing, we got all the equipment. It's like the greater project, he's excited about doing stuff like that, so usually if you're not forced to do something, if you're excited about doing it, goes better, so.
Yeah.
And it's not a traveled road, it's, it's a pretty easy project, really, because
Yeah, no traffic control.
No traffic control.
Roads already closed.
Yeah, it's closed, so. And he, he talked, he came down today and talked to me, and he's, he's on board with-
Okay, so that's the decision that highway will do it?
Highway will do it, so.
I don't think we even need to make a motion on that, do we?
No, I don't believe we have to. All right.
Next is the MERP grant, the financial hardship application was submitted, and we received 20% of the grant funds upfront. It'll help cover initial costs, the money came in on April 14th. The municipal planning grant was submitted by the planning commission, actually Carrie submitted it. Mike Welch did a great job preparing it, along with myself. And that's for us to redo the town plan, so we're waiting to hear back on that. The emergency watershed protection program, that's an application I repaired last week, right? And that's Carrie submitted, I think, on Thursday last week. Sounds like this is for the Upper Valley Grill, the river behind-
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Grill. Money's still in hold, but the program wanted the application, so if money is reallocated, it will be ready to go. ARPA yearly reporting is due April 30th, but it's been completed.
Yeah, we did that last week.
Yep. Nice. Journal Opinion is writing a piece about Green Up Day for local town information. So they need to know where the dumpster will be moved to, as it will most likely need to be moved during the parking lot project. So we'll let Carrie know tomorrow that we're moving it to the highway garage. And we should also let Carrie know about the event at the library to share with, are you advertising that event anywhere?
It's at, it's, it's on our newsletter and on our porch forum, and, um-
Maybe we can get a, it's on Green Up Days website, too, by the way. They wanted a bad sound, like, all right.
So, do you want a dumpster to come from Pete's usually, I think, and pick up the bags, or do you want all the bags to sit outside? Myers won't pick them up unless we coordinate with them in advance. And we always get hung up on this.
Yeah.
We never know what to do, and then nothing gets done, and then we, we have tons of bags and bears. And, yeah, yeah, they won't take some things, you know. So, what has been done in the past was you count how many bags you have, so you can compare to previous years. So you have to make sure that you come down right after that weekend.
Yeah.
You know, last year, I think the bear came to town, and Steve had to pick it up, I think, three different times, because it was strewn everywhere. But, so, I don't know what you want me to do, do you want me to help and get a dumpster?
Yeah, we should line up Pete's, or get a separate dumpster for them, you think?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I could find out.
We have like $300 in the budget or something for that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, let's see, if they can do a dumpster, and then we can put it in, you know, put a sign on it, says Green Up Day Bags Here.
Yeah, we're gonna have to put one over here, don't leave your bags here. It has to go up there, so.
I'll come by here and check and take bags over that way if I have to.
Well.
Because you know someone will put them there.
Yeah, I know.
How big of a dumpster?
I don't know, well, say no tires in the dumpster.
Yeah, because $300 doesn't buy you a bunch of big dumpsters.
No, it doesn't.
I mean, I think that's how much it was to pick it up. They, if you coordinate with either one, Myers or Pete's, I think they can come and pick it up, but they're not, on a regular pickup, they're not gonna pick it up.
Yeah, okay, so they'll come and they'll throw it in.
So if I coordinate with them, I, I think it's around the money that we put in the budget.
They come, they come to bills on Mondays, so maybe Myers, that's Myers that goes down there, so maybe we ask them to come on Monday to the highway garage for a special pickup of the Green Up Day bags.
Okay.
And then, hopefully, they don't have to pick up trash from bears, I don't understand where food's coming from, why aren't bears eating on the side of the road?
I know, that was our question, too, and when Steve was picking it up, he saw a lot of food in wrappers, and, so.
Somebody just put it in the garbage.
Yeah, so somebody was doing that, so. All right, I'll, I'll let you know what I find out for prices and have everything coordinated to be picked up.
Yeah, and if there's things like metal, does Harold have a metal?
No.
Container there, no? They won't take that, I don't think they will, they probably will.
I don't know.
I know they probably won't take tires.
They won't take tires.
What do we usually do with the tires?
I think Steve puts them in the back of his truck and he brings them to recycling. Because it sits there long enough and can't stand it, so.
Does recycle make us pay for each tire?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it comes in our quarterly invoice thing, so.
And they take metal for free, so.
Yes, right.
Oh, so we can bring it up there and they'll just bill us for it?
Well, I don't, I, you know.
I'm, I'm representing it.
I don't really want it to be like-
We probably have to designate, have Harold throw them in the new truck, take them off for sale.
Yeah, all right. All right, so I'll, I'll work with you, Mike, and see what I get for prices.
Cool, we got a couple of things on Puffer Field, Men's Little League, Men's League and Little League will be using the field starting this week, most days of the week. Frost Field will be used for Little League starting this week, every night and Saturdays. And then the dog licensing fee is now $18 for fixed and $24 for not fixed, and it's currently 20, uh, 70, known dogs that are unlicensed. And that was it from Carrie.
I had one thing from Carrie that she wanted us to discuss, and I signed that. The appointment of a representative to the NEK governing board, which we had already appointed Mike Geis and the alternate Mark McLean. And we just needed to, I just signed it, so. We're good, make it official.
Yeah, I can give a planning update, I have one thing from the planning commission. We have our public meeting for the town plan update on Tuesday next week. It's a public meeting, so we can re-adopt our town plan. The following step, once the planning commission approves the re-adoption, is for it to come to the select board as a public meeting, for the select board to decide whether or not to re-adopt the plan. It has to be a publicly posted meeting. Didn't look at the warning requirements, but we, it was longer than normal, it's like 30 days for the planning commission. I'm not sure if it's the same for the select board. But we'll square that away, we'll see if we approve it on Tuesday, I anticipate we will. But just putting that on the radar, that's, that's all I have for the planning commission. Select agent library.
Here on the library.
Okay.
Property management policy pertaining to ARPA.
Hi.
All right.
I just sent you that last week to sort of give a heads off. But this is in regards to the US Treasury capital funds project, capital projects funded by the library's grant. It came to our attention that in order to distribute funds for this grant to the library, it's required, it's required that the town has a property management policy. And the Department of Libraries provided their grant management specialist, Mark McClary. He shared with us a template for what potentially could be adopted by the town from that would be in compliance with the federal requirements for this particular portion of ARPA funding, which I think has to do with when it's funds from the treasury. And so, I am asking if you would consider adopting the policy that was shared. One of the pieces of information that Mark shared with us is that it's possible that the policy could be specifically, you know, adopted, adopted for the library for the duration of this grant. So that it is like, we have this policy for the library's capital improvements grants, and then when that is complete, and then it is, you know, no longer necessarily a town policy. But because the town grant is the subrecipient on the grant for the library, it has to be a town policy and not a library policy. That's adopted.
We own the building.
No.
No, it's a lease, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you might not know, we, we're getting a grant
Oh, yeah.
To redo the whole, you know, a lot of the improvements.
Yeah.
Coming through Groton to rural Edge.
One of the pieces, you know, in, in talking with John Miller Evans, who's the trustee, you know, Jenny's there also this evening, John is the, has been the liaison for this project, and, you know, this, it seems like this is, this is a, a policy that just would be, you know, consistent with like the federal guidance for how property is managed, and property, you know, they refer to here could be computers, equipment, you know, how that's handled. It may be that, you know, the funds that we're using are for envelope repairs or for, you know, infrastructure repairs, so it might not necessarily be applicable to what we are purchasing with those grant funds, but in order for the Department of Libraries to distribute any reimbursements to us, we have to have the policy in place, or the town has to have the policy in place.
So, we have the ball?
So, yeah, I printed out-
Did rural, did rural, I don't need to look at the policy, review it or anything?
No, this is, the department, it's through the, because the town is the recipient of the grant, not rural Edge. Rural Edge is just hiring the contractors to do the work, so it's all coming through here. So, I did print out, and I said-
I just had one.
I have, oh, it's wrong, I'm so sorry, it's a wrong one.
God has a legal background, which is a plus for-
And this, this is what the Department of Libraries shared as like, if your town doesn't have this policy, consider adopting, you know, this, here's the, like-
Give us two months.
I'm so sorry, a lot of this is. So what I did is I took the, the sample policy that the grant specialist from the Department of Libraries had, and instead, you know, I just added town Groton, where it said add the subrecipient. So, I'm not sure, you know.
So, we got time if we can look over this and have it for you the next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. We, so just as an additional piece of information, we have, rural Edge has just selected a construction manager. We have not incurred any costs yet or begun the project or started work, so there's no, there's no, we're not waiting for any money or reimbursements to happen. This is just, I think, the right, the timing for reviewing this, this is right now, because the construction manager has just been hired, and we're hoping to have our first sort of meeting with that individual in the next two weeks or so. So things will start to, start to unfold.
So we can just push this to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Just get us a chance to? I mean, I-
I, I mean, I go by you here telling me that it's needed, uh, we'll, I'm sure, we'll, we'll do it, but.
Just looking at this.
The right thing to do is read it over and, and understand it instead of.
And like I, um, like I mentioned, you know, what, what Mark shared was, there's different options that the town could choose to, um, um, how they could apply this, if it is, you know, adopting it just for the duration of the grant. Or adopting it for a longer term basis, um, and I, I outlined some of the, the correspondence that I had with him in, um, in, in what I shared. Um, so I just wanted to, um, make sure to come in person and. Check in about it, so that we were all on the same page about what the timeline was and, and why it's important.
Yep. So, looking at this, these are very similar terms that the state, when the state gets funding from, from federal sources, about what you do with the property that you're acquiring with their funding. It's, it's pretty much the same terms. If it's over a certain amount, and you have to get rid of it, you have to get permission to do so. Um, this looks very similar to what I've seen before.
Which is why, like, for our particular grant, you know, what we're talking about is like a new roof.
Yeah.
Siding, you know, HVAC, windows, generator.
So, rural Edge?
Cause they own it, so they would have to, I mean, we're doing, we don't own the property, so.
Right, but it comes to the.
We would own probably like that generator and, uh. Wonder. Well, we're telling them like if we, something happens to the generator, that we're probably maintaining it and things like that. Want to take a look at this?
Well, we're fixing the building up for rural Edge. If we adopt a policy, they, if they turn around and sell it in three years.
The, I think we have a pretty, um, strong agreement with them.
Yeah.
Um, that the library, you know, we have a tenure, um, we're in year seven of tenure, at least ten, we have the option to buy, um, should that time come.
Yeah, so they can just pull it out, right. We're, we, we got beyond the, the ten years of the agreement, yeah.
But I would be happy to make a connection, um, you know, if I have, you know, a.
Personally, I just need time to read it over.
Yeah, absolutely.
If I got questions, I'll come see you and ask you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share.
Meeting will, uh, will move forward.
Absolutely. Mark McClary is the grant, um, manager for the Department of Libraries, and I feel like he'd be a really good person to answer questions that come up. Um, my knowledge is clearly limited in terms, I just know how it applies to this particular thing, but the other stuff's pretty good.
Yeah, no.
I think the other, just to chime in here, I think the other important thing to keep in mind is what Sarah said, is that, you know, we're, we're this is a grant to not purchase like computers and things like that, though. Some of that language is in this document because it's necessary to comply with what the government is requiring municipalities to have in their, in a poli, a property management policy. But it wouldn't be, it's not going to be some of, the money isn't going to be spent on those kinds of things for this particular project. It's like Sarah said, we're deciding. Um, infrastructure repairs, things like that, so.
No.
So even though it's in the policy, it's not in the scope of the grant?
Right. So hard to have on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, so.
I wanted to, um, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, for that. I wanted to share, um, two other things, cause I don't do, it's come, I don't come that often. Uh, and I wanted to make sure that I shared. Um, there are just two upcoming programs that I wanted to bring your attention to. Um, the first on May the second, which is right, right around the corner at Sycamore Leaf. Um, we're hosting, um, uh, we, it took some time to coordinate the date and the date ended up changing. Um, but we will be hosting a conversation with, um, the Growing Peace Project, um, Neighbors in Action and Salvation Farms around food access in the community. Um, all three of those organizations work to, um, provide either community meals or offer cleaned produce or some other, um, uh, creative, community-based ways to enhance food access in the community. And I wanted to extend an invitation to you all to come on that evening. It's Friday evening, on May second, May second, at five thirty. Um, the second program I wanted to, um, share with you all is that we will be hosting, um, an event at the end of June, on June twenty-eighth, um, from nine thirty until about two o'clock. Um, as a part of that event, we will have a car seat safety check and a bicycle helmet giveaway. Um, and informational tables available, um, for people to, um, learn about various organizations and groups within the community and in the regions, or for example, um, the Crossmont Trail will be there. Um, the Partner Health will be there, um, Rural Edge will have a table, um, and then there'll be some entertainment, um, for, for kids. We'll have a story time and a storyteller, and, um, it should be a really fun morning of activity, um, in our village. Just wanted to put that out there and something to look forward to.
Well, thank you, and thank you for what you do for the town.
What is the title of that day?
Um, I, the title of that day, um, I've been calling it A Day in Our Village.
Nice. It might be right around when the rail bed's done too.
Let's talk about that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, we're hoping, excuse me, I'm so sorry. Um, we, there's a lot of moving parts still, and, um, I am having a training meeting for the, um, event tomorrow evening. If anyone feels so inclined and wants to pitch in with helping organize. Um, but, um, yeah, details are sort of still getting finalized, but I think it will be really fun, so.
Nice, yeah. I'll second. Here, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate it.
That's all I got.
Alright. If you stick around, I might have a little tidbit about some signage, uh, as part of my grant update, you might wanna listen to.
Okay, yeah, cool. Thanks.
Alright. We're gonna move the next one.
Down.
The assessor discussion on a new assistant.
Probably update on any grants, is that what you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I've got a few updates on the VORAC grant. Uh, so, the, we talked about Crossmont Trail Association. In the grant, um, there's a task for signage. And wayfinding in Crossmont Trail Association has been working with the grant team on the application, implementation. We put in the application that Crossmont Trail would be the, um, that'd help us with signage and wayfinding, cause they're, um, skilled with that. They retained a contractor to do the sign, the signage. Their question is, can the contractor build the town directly? As opposed to this whole sort of circle of, they pay, Crossmont Trail pays them and we reimburse Crossmont Trail. Can the contractor just pay, can they use us directly? Now, we didn't retain the contractor, Crossmont Trail did.
How much were we talking?
Under five thousand is what I've heard. Uh, I didn't get the, um, the map maker was on vacation. But I asked like what the number was, and I, I, I think it's just under five thousand dollars. So I didn't know if we needed like a variance from our purchasing policy to do such a thing, or if we wanted to just pay, I mean, I think we might be in the same boat if we pay Crossmont Trail direct, uh, and having to. Uh, but they're written into the grant agreement as helping us with that, so. Uh, just wanted to bring that up. I think I brought it up briefly last meeting.
I'll have to look a little deeper.
It's a funky one, yeah.
Alright, so I'll see what.
Um, I asked Carrie, one of the requirements of the trails of, of the grant is that we post our maps online. Uh, and do a ca, a trail, a counter of the website, uh, to see how many people have clicked on it. It's one of the metrics we're supposed to track. Um, so Carrie's looking into that. Um, then the other thing, we're putting signs up, uh, a sign, big sign at the Gateway Park. Uh, Crossmont Trail is gonna put a sign there as well. They have standard signs along the trail that they're gonna be installing that say what town you're in. Uh, so they, they have proposed a sign to go there. Um, I wasn't okay with just a Crossmont Trail sign there, so I wanted a Groton sign there. We have funding in the grant to do so. So I've designed some signs. I'm in the process, I might have also redesigned our town logo, so I just wanted to share. The idea, I came up with the idea, the, um, the State Forest has those hanging signs around like hangman posts. So I came up with the idea that our outline of our town that you see right there could be a hanging sign, you know? So I basically took our town logo, oops, I changed my password today. I didn't print these out, um, and I didn't email them because this is just something I've been working on.
So the sign would be the shape of that, like if you put it out like that now?
Here's our term town logo. Hey, everyone knows that town logo. So, the thinking was, we'll have it say Groton Gateway Park underneath, you know, or something like that. The problem was, this is in the way, um, and it doesn't leave enough space. So, what I did was, this is the, this is probably my preferred sign design. But then as I was making the sign, I was like, these would be great for like all sorts of places around town. You know, like I looked at the library sign today and I was like, there's a place to sign. Um, this would be the expensive design, but like this would be, if we're just putting one sign up at the Gateway Park and we're looking to spend grant funds, it would be something like that. Uh, but the thinking is, it'd be nice if these were like maybe identified, like the, the baseball fields, you know? And so you, you know you're at a town property.
Yeah.
Um, this is another design. It's just a white background. The blue background's taken directly from the old logo. I kinda like the blue background, cause it would be less dirty than white.
Yeah.
The other thing, so I added a barn, cause this is way longer than the old one.
Oh, yeah.
So I liked our skyline, but I added a barn at the end. This would be like if we wanted to do a new town logo. This is the generic, uh, we don't have to, believe me. I, I just, as I'm doing it, I was just like, there's, so this would be, here's how the signs would look at the Gateway Park.
Yeah.
So a double hangman post.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Um, we'll have probably a local, um, e, either timber frame where someone built this, or maybe we buy and build it, I'm not sure. Um, I'd see the library one here. So, hold on, I'll say, uh, community garden, I don't know if you have community garden folks, but these could go all around, you know? So I, I started even, even for events, like on our website, we can put that up. It takes a minute. I'm just like, oh, I'll change the background. Here's the library one. Think it's pretty sweet. It's got the established, you know, pretty standard.
Yeah.
This really didn't take much time. If you see the snow, the snowmobile club map.
Cute, I like that.
Right?
Yeah.
So what's one of them signs cost?
I don't know yet. So I'm getting, the, the goal tonight was just to, um, just to introduce you to this.
Yeah, no, that's a great, I like that, I like that.
There's three designs I'm thinking of. It's this one, the wooden one, the white one. I think I'm settled on this one, the white one. Um, I don't know how to go back.
Like the light blue that we have now is kinda nice, but I think when Harold got them for the stickers for the trucks.
Yeah.
It looks lavender.
Uh, well, I can make him new stickers for, make him new designs for his trucks if he wants. I haven't, I didn't do a highway department one.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm thinking probably this, this would be the one. Um, so the next step is to get quotes, uh, on it. I'm also thinking it's gonna be a vinyl sign that will probably have a wood back, and probably someone locally would cut the wood and then we would mount the vinyl to it.
So we had trouble with ones, we had a big one on the building and it was wood and it didn't, it did not adhere, didn't stay. So the one that's on the fire station is metal, and on the highway garage is metal, and that has, that still looks brand new.
Maybe I should look at metal. I haven't even looked into this.
Willis has been dealing with a company that makes stickers.
Yeah.
Um, and they're, cause they're doing them for their storage units.
Yeah.
And they're putting aluminum on the back of them.
Oh, really?
And then sticking that to it for their signs, so you might wanna contact him and find out who he's getting the stickers from.
He could cut those right out for you.
Yeah, that metal would be great, yeah. I, I hadn't even thought of metal. I thought of vinyl, I think was the other thing we thought of.
That must be what they do is putting vinyl on top of the.
Yeah, they, I didn't, I didn't actually feel them, but he showed them to me.
You know, this is just for like event pages, like when you post it online, you know?
Yeah.
You could easily change the backgrounds, Veterans Memorial Park, you know, and this is a way to identify, here's a town property, you know?
Yeah.
So, anyway, that, that, um, it came from just designing the sign at the park. Um, I'm not asking for any decisions, but I'm gonna get quotes. I want it to be something inexpensive, so we could maybe put them around town.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and adopt them, so. That was, I have one other thing is to just let you guys know, we did a trail count for the snowmobiles. And we have a wild number of visitors here, as you guys know. Um, but I think we had one weekend with two hundred and seventy-five distinct, different people coming to town. Uh, and the numbers, like the summer numbers are like twenty, thirty people on a week. So we had a week, uh, at the crossing, um, where Rickard Pond is, it's like four hundred and fifty snowmobiles went by. Uh, and that, the number of people is probably in the seven hundred visitors range. I mean, granted, there's people like you guys.
Yeah.
Flying by. Um, Hatch Bridge had a hundred eighty-eight over a course of a week. So it just shows us that, like, our, we have a lot of visitors, um, to, on our town property, on our town trail. Uh, just shows the importance of maintaining the trail and things like that.
Lot of positive stuff from the snowmobile trails this winter.
Yeah.
Lot of good comments from people.
It's great.
They're beautiful. They do such a great job.
Yeah.
Gary, Crossmont Trail, everyone else.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, like, our meetings for this VORAC, there's, there's like, um, between Crossmont Trail and Gary and, and the town, there's just a really good collaboration, really good energy, and I think, um, everyone really cares about the rail bed and, um. Yeah, we're in, we're in really good shape there. The last thing on the VORAC grant, um, is National Trails Day. It's the first Saturday in June. And I'm debating organizing like a day at the Gateway Park to kinda clean it up a little bit and maybe hack some rough trails in. But I've never had like any sort of avenue to do it, and I think the town would be like a good way to do it. I just haven't, it, it may not be on the Trails Day, it may just be like later in the summer. That's kind of a buggy time of year, but just putting on radar, might do like, uh, set it up through the town of a volunteer day out there, um, to, to clean it up.
Yeah.
It's just lots of lumber, it's just crap everywhere and just needs to, yeah, guys with chainsaws, muscles and. What's that used?
Tractor.
Tractor, whatever it is, yeah. So that's, that's all I have on that.
I had an update on the map grant, um, the map restoration grant, um, the total for that ended up being eighteen thousand and seventy-five dollars. Um, Groton, we paid a hundred and six dollars and eighty-nine cents for postage, and we'll get that reimbursed. And as of today, everything's finalized and has gone in, so the, um, we should get a check for our hundred and six soon. And, and the Pennsylvania company has all said, is, or is, um, making it so it, it matched the grant up total. So, and the maps are all back and they're excellent, so it was a good, good program.
Okay, uh, hello, Mike.
Yeah, open his name.
Open. Mike, you wanna?
Oh, yes, uh, my page and I, I keep type on low upstairs. I took over for Russell Pinkham in, uh, seventeen, when he passed away. I made it this, well, I, back then, I agreed to a hundred dollars a month for rent. I went through some hard, I'm right now, I'm, I'm asking for, I'm five months behind. I'm asking if you would forgive that. I was gonna ask for lowering the rent, but if you would forgive that, and I will do it, and can they keep up again in the future? Um, I'm unemployed right now, so I usually have to kick it in, but I won't have the extra money right now, so.
Do you, I mean, how many people do you have come on it?
I have, uh, got, uh, got seven now.
Seven?
Yeah. Uh, I went for quite a while with none, but I didn't pay the rent and so.
But you've been paying it out of your own pocket?
Uh, that's what usually happens. This year I had to choose between insurance and, and rent, and I'm sorry, I took insurance.
Yeah.
It's five hundred and forty-five dollars a year for insurance. I don't get a little of that bit.
I mean, I'm, it's a good service. Yeah, it's good, I'm not, yeah.
Sends kids out.
Yeah.
I mean, and would it help if we?
I mean, and would it help if we, I mean, yeah, I'm, we're not gonna go after you for the back. You're doing a good thing for the kids, so, um, and, but, I don't, going forward, is a hundred gonna be too much for you, I mean, uh, what?
I'll do it again, I mean, lower it would certainly help.
Maybe forgive and then the rest of twenty, twenty-five.
Fifty or, or?
Yeah.
Start pushing.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we, um, just an idea as far as, um, have it no charge for twenty-five and then reassess?
Yeah, we'll have them come in at the beginning of twenty-six to talk about.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, yeah, so we'll forgive what, what you said we owe, you owe, and.
It's five months.
Yeah, and no payment for the rest of the year and first of the year. If that works for you, you can still get the kiddos in here and, 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 uh, yeah, we're not. You know, that's, that's there for.
So maybe make some type of motion or something, just cause I have a decision of money.
Um, I make the motion that we waive the fee and for twenty-five, for twenty twenty-five for the Taekwondo program and also waive the, um, overdue fee to this point.
And forgive the five months?
Yes.
Overdue, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if there was an additional fee.
I so moved.
Second.
Good. All in favor? Aye. You're good, Mike, thanks for coming in.
Right.
Have a good evening. All right. And now we're back to assessor.
So Justin is here and, um, Tom is our third, um, select board member, so we wanted you to come in and meet him.
Hi, Justin. Nice to meet you.
So I don't know if you guys have thought about any more questions for Justin, um, and then you can talk in executive session.
Thank you.
I did not.
I don't have anymore.
You answered my questions, but I think I still have one.
How, how do, um, the other towns handle like your employment? Are you an employee, are you a contractor, or how does that?
Yep, um, so I am a employee of the town of Johnson and I also work for Sheldon, Berkshire, St. Jordan, Hyde Park, and did a contract with Johnson. So I'm a full-time employee and contracted allotted certain hours for each town.
Okay.
Um, my proposal for a bribe is to be an employee, not to add it to that contract agreement.
Okay. Um, would you be open to adding into the contractor group if we find that that is better for us?
Unfortunately, no, um, because the agreement right now is pretty tasked out. So I'm, on average, thirty hours a week, but I'm going to be increasing hours and juggling overtime. Um, so far, I haven't received any, 'cause I'm balancing it, but if I add Groton into that, I would be getting overtime most every week.
What about not? What about being an independent contractor, so you'd have to come in, I believe, with your own insurance, right? And, so it'd be like, uh, so it'd be a little different than what you currently have?
Yeah, um, no. Yeah, it'd be interesting to be an employee, being a contractor with the liability and the insurance and, um, con, yeah, no. I'm uncomfortable with that. Um, my requested rates are based on the inter-local agreements wages, um, so I make thirty-five dollars an hour there plus benefits and that equals out to be somewhere around fifty-five an hour. So my proposal for a bribe was forty-five and presuming I paid no benefits. I thought that student colleagues and other companies, they range from fifty-five to ninety-five plus now, so. Is that what we pay number ninety-five now, what?
Uh, I don't know, what, we're paying number ninety-five an hour?
Ninety-five, yeah.
So that includes the costs and everything else, it's not like what the people are gonna pay.
Right, right, exactly.
It's what's being charged, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we want to talk about money and executive session.
Yeah, we kind of, we're gonna have to.
We have to, so you're gonna make a motion.
Yeah. Okay.
You got any more questions of us?
Um, I guess the question, eh, what, am I invited into your executive session or?
Um.
For some.
No, not at the beginning.
Not, right.
No.
Okay.
I was thinking at the beginning and then make leaves and then.
Yeah, well, no, we need to talk first.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, and then we'll bring you in, yeah. Yeah, and I just took a train today and it's a hard one, it's, uh. If we so choose. You don't take me that long, you can be there, yeah. But I don't, I don't know if we've ever done that before.
No.
We have, right?
No, I don't care about that.
Um, Jackie's going to the other office here or?
Well.
Just a second.
We have to still make a motion.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to.
Yeah, um, I make a motion to go into executive session, um, for purposes of discussing contract information.
Uh, second.
It's five fifty-six.
Five fifty-six, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll go on.
I'm just gonna get my stuff and you can go up there, I'm gonna leave.
Oh, we go somewhere else?
Yeah, we are gonna go.
You can go right, you can go right over to my office.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Um, Larry, I just need you to sign this permit, this is for the two hundred dollars for the, um, pound road.
Right, right here?
Mm-hmm. I can print your name after this.
Okay, can you give that to Carrie?
Yeah, all right, I'm waiting.
In the minutes here somewhere.
I gave him, I gave him.
All right, so we, we'll, uh.
Go, just go up to my office and you can use it and then. All right, bye.
Bye, have a good evening.
Hello, Karen.
He's good.
Yeah.
They're awfully cute when they don't talk, right?
Now, what's his name?
Lane.
Lane. Willis told me, but I'm horrible remembering names.
Me too.
Okay, you wanna do that or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we just have to move out of here.
Uh, motion to exit executive session.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And then we need to just say.
No decisions were made.
No decisions were made.
Yeah.
Um, lastly, I forgot something, the Village Center designation, remember we looked at that map? They gave me a wood, they're looking for a decision on, oh, we have to do more?
Well, she, you're right, the time down, right?
Seven.
Did you, yeah.
Six fifty-nine.
Okay, good.
So, um, sorry.
Who made the motion to go in, was it, oh, I did, right?
You made the motion.
I did, and Larry, you seconded it, right?
Yeah. Who just seconded the motion to end though?
Mike did.
We all did. But I did, yeah. There's one more I forgot on the planning.
Good.
So NVDA, I showed that map of the Village Center and they wanted to expand it to include the other side of the river. Um, Tom, I think you were there that night, right? The map at the Village Center?
Yes.
One thing they, we said, no, let's keep it the same, the one thing they told me now after, and I think either we should reconsider or we should pump this to the planning commission, would, is that it covers multifamily houses and apartment buildings for improvements and getting tax credits, and I know there are quite a few of those over there. No one on this side of the river is taking advantage of those tax credits yet. Um, it's not something the town's involved in, it's, you know, you own an apartment building and you're looking to improve it. You do the, you do the work and you get tax credits for the cost of the work for improving like an apartment building. So I thought I'd bring that back up to us, NVDA wants to know, do we wanna, they, they're like, we're expanding it, what do you think? And I'm like, I already told you, no. But, uh, I don't know if we want, we wanna extend this to the planning commission or if we just want the Village Center's designation to stay the same as it is, we don't have to go through any process to change it. It was a whole process to get the first one.
Yeah. So, is it, what harm's it gonna do to, to leave it, to, to add that, really? Because of what you're saying.
That's kinda what I'm saying, it kinda opens up more people to get, or more property owners to be able to improve properties and get a little kickback for doing it.
But it's on them.
It's on them, yeah, no, they don't, we don't apply for anything, so it's, it, it, you know, I think we just let them a- adjust their map. They've already done the research or figured out where it's eligible and, um, just approve it.
We need a motion on that?
I'll make an emo- I'll make a motion to approve the new Village Center, uh, designation area as, as mapped by NVDA.
Yeah, so move. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, good, good enough.
That's all.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye, good. There we go. What was that?